Good evening and welcome to this public hearing of the Board of Education. Tonight, we will hear from the public on the six Phase Two redistricting plans. As described during the public briefing on October 23, the plans center on altering boundaries for schools in the Annapolis, Arundel, Broadneck, Crofton, Savannah Park, South River, and Southern Clusters. As it did in Phase One of the redistricting process, AACPS worked with WXY to examine enrollment patterns across the schools in the clusters. The board is scheduled to vote on adoption of a redistricting plan next month. The adopted plan would go into effect in the 2026-2027 school year. The link to sign up, the link to sign up for public comment for tonight opened at 3:00 PM on Wednesday, October 22, 2025, and it closed on Saturday at 12:00 PM. We will begin this evening with virtual speakers, and then we will move on to in-person speakers. Speakers will be allotted two minutes each. Because of the number of speakers this evening, we ask that you please be very respectful of the time limitations so that we do not have to mute people or turn off the microphone in mid-sentence. You may not allocate any portion of your time to others. If you are not present or do not speak up when it is your turn in the order, we will move you to the end of the list of speakers. We will provide one additional chance for you to speak after we get through all of the remaining speakers. If you are not present at that time, you will not have an opportunity to speak. For the record, please state your name before speaking. Handouts may be given to the Board Executive Assistant. Those who have missed their opportunity to speak may email their comments to the Board Office at boardoffice@AACPS.org. If you provide testimony tonight, you are not eligible to speak at the November 3 hearing. The light in front of me on the dais will flash yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining. Then a red light will appear and a tone will sound when your time has expired. I will call the first five speakers. Please come forward. You may choose to speak from the podium or from the witness tables, whichever you prefer. If you choose to speak from the tables, please make sure that you pull the mic closer to yourself so that you may be heard. So everyone, thank you for joining us this evening, and we're going to begin with our virtual testimony. Our first speaker this evening is Christina Banks.
Hello. Good evening, Board members. My name is Christina Banks, and I'm here to express concern about the proposed redistricting that would move 28 Watch Apple Elementary students, including my own, to Odenton Elementary School. This change intended to prevent future overcrowding would increase our commute from a .9-mile walk to a 2.2-mile drive each way, creating unnecessary hardship. Our current route to Watch Apple is safe and fully walkable with sidewalks, while the proposed change would require a travel along Piney Orchard Parkway and already congested commuter corridor used for the Mark Station and Fort Meade traffic. It would double travel time and eliminate our children's ability to walk safely to school. According to the most recent data, Watch Apple's utilization has decreased from 101.5% to 94.3%, while Odenton's has increased from 103% to 101.5%. Moving our 28 students would not meaningfully balance capacity. It would simply displace children. Our neighborhood, between Piney Orchard Parkway and Watch Apple Road off Old Watch Apple, is a close-knit community. Relocating our children would sever strong friendships and trusted teacher relationships that have supported their growth. Research shows that school changes can cause stress, anxiety, and academic setbacks. Maintaining stability at Watch Apple will protect children's well-being while having no negative effect on neighboring schools. Leaving our students in place would also improve overall plan metrics, reducing the percentage of elementary students rezoned and lowering the number of affected schools. I respectfully urge the Board to remove Watch Apple Elementary from the redistricting plan and allow these 28 students to remain in the school community where they are safe, supported, and thriving. If the proposal is still approved and Watch Apple's redistricting moves forward, I respectfully ask that current fourth graders be allowed to remain at Watch Apple for fifth grade. They have built friendships and trust there, and fifth grade is already pivotal.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Starting over. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our second speaker is Mark Straw.
Hey, good evening. My name is Mark Straw, and I live in the west quartz of the Piney Orchard community. My son, a fourth grader attending Piney Orchard Elementary, will be directly impacted by the Phase Two redistricting process. I urge you not to move forward with either the R1 or R2 plans, but instead to accept one of the Board's amended plans. The proposed redistricting carries serious drawbacks. Studies show that moving elementary students into new schools can harm their academic and social-emotional growth. It would also shift Piney Orchard students from a five-minute commute to an over-35-minute commute onto Fort Meade, adding more than four hours of weekly travel time, along with extra stress, higher costs, and greater safety risk. Beyond families, our community is already feeling economic effects. Real estate activity in Piney Orchard has notably slowed, and property values are threatened. Educational outcomes also differ significantly. For example, Piney Orchard Elementary outperforms Mannerview by nearly 20 points in reading proficiency and double in math. Similar gaps exist at the middle and high school levels, where Piney Orchard schools consistently outperform the proposed alternative. This plan appears driven by numbers and utilization rates, not by what's best for students, parents, or taxpayers. I urge you to reconsider and pursue alternatives that promote stability, preserve community, and above all, serve the best interest of our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our third speaker is Jessica Pakler.
Sorry, was having problems on muting. Hi, my name is Jessica Pakler. I'm a mom of three current AACPS students in the Annapolis cluster, one who just graduated from Annapolis High School. Additionally, I'm the Ward Eight representative for the Annapolis Education Commission. Standing here outside of Annapolis Middle School, where I am missing the track banquet to be here to advocate for our schools and our community as a whole. I want to say, and I've been saying this since the spring when this first came out, but even more so now, this process needs to be paused because we need to have accurate information. I think you're going to hear from somewhere like 40 people tonight, and unfortunately, and having been a participant in a previous redistricting where we had accurate information and good data and sound reasoning, and that itself was a stressful situation. To have a redistricting where the numbers are constantly changing, where we're waiting on studies that are going to now be released after the redistricting is scheduled to be voted on, and where multiple communities are being urged to approve or support something that does not actually stand for the goals that were stated at the beginning of this redistricting process, I ask that the school system please consider pausing this entire redistricting. We all have our individual reasons. I could go on and on and tell you why I don't think the Eastport Georgetown East-Hillsmere change is a good one, because at no point should we ever be redistricting students based on personal preference of a neighborhood, as opposed to actual facts and figures related to capacity and school utilization, which is what is happening in that one. I could talk for hours on why the Mills parole plan isn't a good one because it disrupts an entire community at the high school level when our community needs the least to be disrupted. I could probably talk about multiple plans outside the Annapolis cluster, but in the end, what I'm going to ask is that you please stop this process. The data is flawed, the process is flawed, the reasoning is flawed, the plans are flawed. Regardless of where our children attend school, we are all unified in the belief that this redistricting is flawed and betraying community trust in AACPS.
Our next speaker, our next speaker, ladies and gentlemen, I want to remind everyone, because of the numbers that we have this evening, we want everyone to have the opportunity to speak. And so everyone has two minutes, and we respectfully ask everyone to utilize those two minutes, but please pause and stop at the end. I thank you in advance for that. Our next speaker is Alicia Pitts.
Good evening. My name's Alicia Pitts, and I am here to talk on behalf of the, or about the redistricting on behalf of my children who will be affected in my entire neighborhood. I live in Watch Apple Enclave, which had, this will be its third redistricting in the past four years, first from Crofton to Piney to Two Rivers, where we currently are, and now the superintendent's suggestion will put us back at Piney Orchard. This is not acceptable for multiple reasons. One being, for us to go back to Piney Orchard, we would have to pass multiple elementary schools on both, on the only two routes to get to Piney Orchard in order to get to that school. We would pass Two Rivers and where we currently are and drive another 15 to 20 minutes, depending on traffic. And that adds, as other parents have said, adds a lot of time in the car each day for elementary school kids. Additionally, and for, to move us out of Two Rivers Elementary would be essentially creating a public school for one neighborhood, Two Rivers. And I know that it is a large neighborhood, but it, having all of those homes which are valued at over $1 million and having a public school only for a neighborhood of over $1 million homes is socioeconomic segregation, and that should not be a consideration in applying for redistricting of schools. It, we, this is our second year at Two Rivers. Our students have already gone through multiple redistricting, as I've already said. This disrupts, disrupts learning, it disrupts the community engagement and disrupts the relationships that our students are feeling, and it's just going to heighten problems for all of our, for our entire community, especially our community of multiple military families who, whenever we are in one neighborhood, we would like to have some sort of
Thank you, Ms. [inaudible].
Stability, which you are taking away of this redistricting.
Our next speaker is Ashley Eden.
Hello. Good evening, members of the Board. As you said, my name's Ashley Eden, and I am a mother to three young boys who will soon be entering the Anorondal County Public School System. I'm here tonight to strongly oppose the proposed redistricting amendment that would move the students of Gingerville, Poplar Point, and Willinar Communities out of the South River Cluster. And this is not because I resist change, but because this process, as many have stated here tonight, has been rushed and built on shifting and unreliable data. From the beginning, the data has been inconsistent. It changes with each report, each meeting, and each update. I'm having a hard time keeping up, which means the conclusions we're being asked to accept are built on sand and not substance. It's important to note that none of the data in any of the reports have ever supported moving the students from any of these communities. In fact, every version has shown a movement into Edgewater Elementary and not out, about 37 students consistently. The census data over the past three years confirms that Edgewater Elementary has maintained optimal utilization, while Annapolis High School has been overutilized for the same period, even before adding the additional students to that cluster. And now, the latest information makes this even clearer. Board Member Dawn Pullman herself is attempting to withdraw her proposed amendment after Superintendent Mark Fidel presented the unofficial 2025 student census data, because those very numbers further support keeping our Gingerville, Poplar, and Willinar students in their current schools. When even the sponsor of the amendment recognizes that the data no longer supports the proposal, that should tell us everything that we need to know. If the discussion is truly about accommodating the future growth at Davidsonville Elementary, then the South River Cluster has already, already has adequate capacity to adjust internally, without uprooting the students, families, and communities that are functioning so well currently. This process needs to be slowed down, and we need decisions that are driven by accurate data and not outdated projections or political pressure.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
I respectfully urge the Board to reject this amendment and allow for time for a transparent and database review that truly reflects
Your time has expired. Thank you. Our next speaker is Neer Muljit Samra.
Yep. Thank you so much. I'm here to express strong opposition to the proposed redistricting plan that would realign students from Watch Apple Elementary School to Odenton Elementary School. First, the plan attempts to address a problem that no longer exists. The latest state-rated capacity data presented at the October 15 Board of Education meeting projects Watch Apple being at a 94.3% utilization rate, indicating the school is not at or above capacity. The realignment would actually put Odenton Elementary School at 101.5 capacity, which is the figure that drove the realignment discussions impacting Watch Apple students in the first place. Additionally, no major new developments are expected in our immediate area, and while enrollment may fluctuate slightly in our heavily military community, our goal should be offered, to be, to offer military families and all students stability. Second, many impacted students would be realigned to a school that is no longer closest to them, creating a commute and commute with dangers. For my student, proximity to school would double from .9 miles to 1.8 miles. Currently, students can walk safely through a residential community with only two lanes of traffic, thoughtful stoplights, stop signs, and crosswalks. The proposed realignment would expose students to a busy four-lane parkway with high-speed traffic, and that has been a sight to major deadly accidents in the years past. Third, these redistricting plans have negative consequences for families and students, impacting home values based on disparate school ratings, severing foundational relationships within their communities, and disrupting access to established school-age childcare programs. If, after considering the data and my fellow community members' testimony, the Board still decides to proceed with this realignment, I strongly recommend implementing a grandfather clause that allows current students and their siblings to complete their education at their current schools. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abraham Sadat.
Good evening, Dr. Fidel, members of the Board. I'm an Anorondal County native and a former AACPS teacher. I currently live in Chicago while pursuing my graduate degree in public policy at the University of Chicago. Despite the distance, I have been closely following AACPS's ongoing redistricting processes because I have been gravely concerned about how this redistricting will impact equity in AACPS. Economist Rucker Johnson found that Black students who attended integrated schools earn 25% higher family incomes, were 22 percentage points less likely to be incarcerated, and were significantly healthier as adults. Integration changes life trajectories, it breaks cycles of poverty, violence, and loss potential. And integration isn't just about sitting next to white peers. It's about access, access to excellent teachers, advanced courses, and the stability that comes with a well-resourced school. These benefits last a lifetime and ripple across generations. When AACPS hired WXY, I believe this process would finally be data-driven, transparent, equitable. But as Phase Two unfolded, it became harder to see those principles and actions. The maps protected the same affluent, predominantly white clusters that have always been protected, while the burden of change falls mostly on students of color. The SR1, SR2, and SR3 proposals would divide Nantucket Elementary, one of our few genuinely, genuinely integrated schools. One of the two census blocks, 722.08, is 51% black, the highest in Crofton, and another has the cluster's largest Asian population. Additionally, the three redistricting options placed around the middle above 100% capacity and require displacing some of the Arundel Cluster's most impoverished neighborhoods to the Meade Cluster. I want to remind you all that the job is not done by simply getting all schools in the county to under 100% capacity. Another piece of the puzzle, which none of the redistrict map, maps in front of us are tackling, is underutilization. South River High, one of the most well-resourced schools in the county, sits under capacity, while Annapolis High struggles with overcrowding and exhaustion.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you so much.
Numerous studies have shown and quantified.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Cherry Holmes.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Lauren, and I'm the parent of two elementary-age children in the Watch Apple Elementary community. I'm here tonight to express my concern about the proposed redistricting and its potential impact on my children, particularly the risk of losing their access to the International Baccalaureate IB Program at Watch Apple. One of my children is a first grader who lives with type one diabetes. His success and safety are paramount, and both would be at risk with a transition to a new school or suffer unfamiliar with his medical needs. At Watch Apple, teachers, administrators, and even other students know how to support him and keep him safe. That trust and awareness have taken two and a half years for us to build. Both of my children deeply value the IB program, excuse me, at Watch Apple, one of only a few elementary IB programs in Anorondal County. This program fosters global thinking, French language learning, inquiry-based education, and has a strong sense of community, benefits that extend far beyond test scores. However, Watch Apple's test scores exceed county averages, which may reflect the strength of this IB program. Redistricting would deprive students of these unique opportunities. Currently, Watch Apple is 39 students below the Board's projected enrollment for this year and 31 students below overall capacity. If 28 students are redistricted, the school would be 57 students below capacity, while the receiving school projected is already overcapacity. This move doesn't resolve a capacity issue, it creates inefficiency. I urge the Board to reconsider this proposal and remove Watch Apple students from being reassigned to neighboring schools. Please preserve both the integrity of the Watch Apple community and the IB program that exemplifies excellence, using excellence across our county. Thank you for your time and your continued commitment to thoughtful, data-driven decisions that put our students first.
Thank you. Thank you. That does conclude the virtual testimony this evening, and so we're going to move on to our in-person testimony. I'm going to be calling up five speakers at a time, and speakers may have a seat if you choose to sit to testify. Please bring the mics closer to you. You may also speak from the podium. So I'm going to call up five individuals at this time. Elizabeth Hanano, Danielle Miller, Adam Fidel, Rhonda Wheelwright, and Erica Ship. Our first speaker is Elizabeth Hanano.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Hanano. I want to start by acknowledging everyone who came out tonight, virtually and in person. It's truly amazing to see how many people care about our community more than Monday Night Football. I'm Elizabeth Hanano. I'm the mother of two young girls, the daughter of a phenomenal public school teacher, and a resident of the Bay Ridge community. Bay Ridge supports the clause in Dr. Tobin's Amendment to move our students from Georgetown East to Hillsmere Elementary, the closer, more logical neighborhood school. Bay Ridge is a community that loves to be together. Our kids decorate floats together for the Fourth of July Parade. We watch each other's children. We've survived three Facebook threads about leaf blowers. We are a close-knit group, but due to zoning, our kids do not share a neighborhood public school. Our request would not displace any current Hillsmere students and would keep Hillsmere within its goal utilization. Further, we believe there is no need to shift Eastport students to Georgetown to increase utilization due to Maryland's Comar laws and IAC practice. Getting to Georgetown East from Bay Ridge requires navigating the heavily congested Forest Drive corridor. In contrast, Hillsmere is less than two miles from Bay Ridge, reached by calm, single-lane neighborhood roads with one traffic light and bike lanes. In closing, we support the Board and Dr. Tobin's effort to increase Anorondal's 19% public school participation rate and would love to be a part of the public school community. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Miller.
Danielle Miller, this comment addresses the proposed amendment to the Annapolis Cluster that will impact Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere Elementary Schools. If the Board approves this amendment, the decision will reinforce and exasperate existing racial and socioeconomic segregation within Annapolis schools. Diversity is a core strength of our educational system. The proposed amendment has the effect of gerrymandering the Annapolis Cluster based on socioeconomic status, which will have a disparate impact on students. In Policy AF, the Board acknowledged the system structures and practices that have intentionally In Policy AF, the board acknowledged the system structures and practices that have intentionally and unintentionally created and continue to afford advantages to some student groups while perpetuating inequities for others. The policy emphasizes that the school district must take responsibility in action for dismantling and actively repairing these inequities to ensure positive educational outcomes for all students. Yet this proposed amendment does the exact opposite by intentionally perpetuating inequities in the cluster. It is deeply concerning that this proposal was introduced so late with no substantive explanation, except that Dr. Tobin heard from individuals who say Hillsmere is closer. This rationale lacks consistency and undermines the integrity of the process. If proximity was the governing factor, homes on Edgewood and Georgetown roads are closer to Hillsmere than many homes in the Bay Ridge area, and yet those streets are not included. Similarly, students north of Hillsmere Drive are over three miles from Hillsmere, yet significantly closer to both Tyler Heights and Georgetown East Elementary, which indicates proximity is not consistently applied. The proposed amendment, while appearing neutral, lacks rational justification and has a discriminatory impact. The proposal cherry picks an area within East Point catchment that is hysterically a much lower household income than the rest of Eastport, under the guise of balancing enrollment for any loss from the south of Carrollton. I strongly urge the Board of Education to reject this proposed amendment.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. Adam Bedell.
Good evening. My name is Adam Bedell, and I have a sixth and ninth grader at Arundel, and we live in West Odenton in one of the three properties included in Ms. Schallheim's amendment to adjust the boundary line that goes out of its way to remove us from our current community. I want to explain why her amendment should be approved. When we bought our house in 2014, this is what the area looked like. Our property here was surrounded by woods, and this boundary line existed for only the elementary school. But in 2018, a development of 48 townhouses and three single-family homes was built around us. For seven years now, my kids have attended middle and high school with the current children in these homes. My son is on the Arundel football team with a teammate that lives one house away that is the first house on the other side of the proposed boundary line. For seven years, my kids have developed relationships and bonds with these neighborhood children. Keeping the boundary as proposed would go against a couple of the factors and considerations in drawing boundaries that were presented at a previous meeting. Number one, areas that are contiguous communities surrounding the school. There is no good justification at this point with a new community built around us to keep the boundary as proposed. This goes against a principle of the board where they state they want to limit the disruption and tearing apart communities. Keeping the proposed boundary would directly cut out and remove our children from the community, peers, and friends literally one house away. Number two, the use of natural or man-made boundaries. There's no natural or man-made boundary that this follows. There's no roads, creeks, or highway. It runs along the back of my property and between my two neighbors' yards. In conclusion, keeping the boundary the way it's proposed shouldn't apply anymore since this community has literally been built around us. It was set in place a long time ago for the elementary school, not the middle or high school, before the new community around us existed. It should now be adjusted to include us as part of the new community. Additionally, approving this amendment will have no impact on any of the reported statistics. Thank you, and I strongly encourage you to vote on any of the board-recommended proposals and to approve Ms. Schallheim's amendment.
Thank you. Rhonda Wheelwright.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda, a Watch Apple Woods community member, a parent of five children, two of which are currently enrolled at Watch Apple Elementary. The superintendent and board's plans have proposed a shift for our children to Odenton Elementary from Watch Apple Elementary, which is currently 39 students below the projected number by the board this year and is 31 students below capacity for this school year. Removing our 28 students causes Watch Apple to be 57 students below capacity. The school they are projected to move to is exceeding their capacity. In addition, updated 2027 projections show that Watch Apple Elementary would continue to be below capacity even without redistricting changes. At the board meeting on October 15th, the Phase 2 redistricting update, the utilization for Watch Apple Elementary was updated to a decrease of 7.2% or less 39 children. These numbers still include the 28 children proposed to move from our area, leaving Watch Apple currently at 94.3% utilization. Odenton Elementary's utilization was also updated with an increase of 1.2%, making them overutilized at 101.5% capacity. Moving our group would only add to that. The redistricting process, as design has led, are children being overlooked and ignored with updated redistricting plans and amendment seemingly in favor of bigger or more significant areas. Our neighbors have followed the board's recommendations to be heard by commenting sad faces on the proposed map and emailing the board. Recently, a chart was displayed on the AACPS website showing the top 10 commented on redistricting areas, but since we're too small of a group, we were bypassed. Within these 28 children, there are complex needs that range between medical disabilities, educational challenges, and behavioral supports. A sudden change after established stability in their home schools puts their psychological safety at risk to protect-- thank you.
Thank you. Erica Ship.
Hi, good evening. I'm Erica Ship. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak on behalf of my child and the small number of students at Watch Apple Elementary. Our small minority neighborhood within the Watch Apple community has sadly felt overlooked and excluded during the Phase 2 of the redistricting process. Our community was not referenced in any public comments, absent from updated maps, and excluded from the amended recommendations. But I do not believe this was done with malice, but rather without knowledge of our little community. We are a neighborhood encompassing diversity, ranging from veterans, clergy, immigrants, different cultural, ethnic backgrounds. We are parents who believe our children should be exposed to diverse viewpoints and perspectives, which is why we chose our Watch Apple neighborhood. While I do believe Odenton Elementary students and parents thrive in their school, I do not believe moving our children from their current academic structure will continue their path of success and growth. My sweet middle child suffers from emotional and mental health concerns, and this year we have finally made significant progress. She started in this school in kindergarten and will be in fifth grade next year. Uprooting her will potentially set her back and may hinder her future. I respectfully request that you consider leaving the small number of children and mine at Watch Apple Elementary to continue their path and sustain their academic success. Their emotional, physical, and mental health are excelling at this very moment. I want this county, I want this board, and Watch Apple Elementary to continue to be a part of their success story. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Now, we're going to be calling up another five group. Jason Ship, Alan Wheelwright, Molly McAdams, Tessa Caminiti, and Matt Caminiti.
Good evening. The husband, Jason Ship, a resident of Watch Apple Woods community located in central Arundel. I'm also a father of three children as well as a high school educator. My children have benefited highly from attending Watch Apple Elementary School, and unfortunately, that could no longer be the case for them to do their education there. Quality education, a safe, warm environment, and a supportive community are all paramount for my wife and I when it comes to our children. The current redistricting scenarios for Enroll County Public Schools would greatly threaten that future avenues for academic opportunity and familiarity with an enriching community that my family has been rooted in for many years now. This is especially the case with our second child, Victoria Ship, who is one more school year from graduating from Watch Apple Elementary School. Victoria, being a student with specialized needs and emotional sensitivity, has benefited from extra care, classroom accommodations, counselor support, and familiarity with her learning environment. Changing all of that for the 2026 to 2027 school year and beyond would have great implications for growing academic development and place in a learning environment of uncertainty various new policies suggest too, and a shift from both friends and adult staff members that she has grown to trust and rely on, all during her last school year of elementary school. So I humbly ask as both a parent, as a teacher, and just as just somebody who cares a lot that you reconsider not moving the children of Watch Apple Elementary. I say this having witnessed, again as a teacher, firsthand the negative impact of kids being shifted to a new school year or to school during a critical year of their academic and emotional development. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Alan Wheelwright. Okay. Molly McAdams.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Bedell, Dr. Heiser, your staff, and everybody behind me and at home that's supporting us here in Edgewater. My name's Molly McAdams. I'm here to urge the board to remove the amendment that moves Will Eleanor, Gingerville, and Poplar Point out of our home South River Cluster and into the Annapolis Cluster. I really support Anorondal County Public Schools. My kids started about 41 years ago. I'm a parent, a grandparent, and a certified full-time teacher in the schools, now retired. I fully support Ms. Pulliam's effort to withdraw this amendment. There's ample capacity in the South River Cluster, insufficient space at Annapolis High School to justify such a change. Board members have shared information very generously. The Anorondal County Public Schools has briefed us. Here are the facts. Annapolis High School is already at 100% capacity. This amendment would raise it to 102. South River High operates at 75% utilization. This amendment would reduce it to 73, going towards underutilization. Edgewater Elementary, on the other hand, is not overcrowded, has room to grow, as confirmed in the superintendent's recommendation number three. Beyond the numbers, this amendment would send our students outside our home community, across the Route 2 Commercial Industrial Carter, that you all are very familiar with, one of the congested areas that had been highlighted as most congested in the state. This undermines the Anorondal County Public Schools' goal of stability and assignments for our students separating from their natural community. It's not supported by data; it's not needed; it conflicts with the stated purposes of the process to balance enrollment while maintaining student stability. Please remove the Will Eleanor, Gingerville, Poplar Point amendment from consideration. Our students belong in the South River Cluster. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tessa Caminiti.
My name is Tessa, and I'm-- my name is Tessa, and I am a second grader at Nantucket Elementary. And I wanted to talk tonight because I have learned a lot about redistricting in the last eight months. I don't know all the details, but I know that that what some people think you should do to kids like me is not fair. It's not fair to make a small group of kids go to a different-- to go to different schools from their friends. Why should almost everyone in my grade get to go to Crofton Middle and Crofton High, but me and-- but me and a few other kids might have to go to Arundel? For-- for a lot of the time when my parents were talking about this, I thought everyone in my grade would have to go to a new middle school. But then I realized it was just a small group of kids, and that is what felt really not fair. Why would anyone think that is a good idea? Well, I'm here to tell you it's not a good idea. Please let me go to Middle and High School with my friends.
Matt Caminiti.
Thank you. I was watching my fifth grader Connor and his friend play in the backyard a few weeks ago, but instead of feeling the immense joy that a father should feel when seeing his son play with a friend, I felt immense pain. Because while today they are classmates at Nantucket, next year they would be torn apart under the unamended redistricting plans, with his friend going to Crofton Middle and my son going to Arundel Middle. How can we do that to our kids? We can't care about kids and then consider a plan to tear them apart during the most formative point of their young lives. These two things are antithetical to education best practices and what's best for children. These kids aren't a statistic; they are young, impressionable human beings. Remember, these kids have lived through COVID and are just rebuilding close relationships with peers. We're also in the midst of regular government shutdowns, mass layoffs of the federal workforce, countless protests, all impacting families and kids in Anorondal County. Trust in government institutions and elected officials is at a historic low. How will they learn to trust adults and these institutions if this is how they're being treated? What our kids need now more than anything is stability. They need their communities, and they need institutions such as AACPS to support this. What they don't need is the unnecessary stress of navigating two communities. Crofton, where they spent years building relationships that they will be trying to maintain, and Arundel, where there'll be outsiders trying to fit in. We know that community and connection matters. We spend years supporting our children in building relationships and trust with their peers, and similarly with fellow parents, knowing whose houses are safe and where we are comfortable letting our kids hang out. If you don't pass Ms. McDermott's amendment every year, every year, families of fifth graders will be starting over. I understand that redistricting means some students will have to move, but nowhere in the AACPS mission statement does it talk about being beholden to state formulas, SRC developers, or individuals within the county or state government. We shouldn't recklessly tear apart communities, harm children year after year, and decrease student safety for minimal to no gain. Redistricting may be necessary; split articulating Nantucket is not. I implore you to make the right decision. Please include in any finalized redistricting plan support for board member McDermott's amendment to not split articulate students at Nantucket Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll be calling up five additional speakers. Zach Caminiti, Jalanda Curtis, Courtney Sparrow, Megan Leanhardt, and Cole Fleischer.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Zach, and I'm a seventh grader at Crofton Middle School. I came to testify tonight because the idea of split articulating a very small portion of kids from the Nantucket community, my community, is unacceptable. I've been a part of a student leadership group advocating for-- about redistricting. I've learned a lot. I understand that sometimes kids have to switch schools, but I also know that in every other county nearby, they do their best to make sure those changes occur, starting in elementary school, so that kids can stay together with their friends. And if they do split articulate schools, they make sure that it doesn't impact a tiny minority like has been proposed here. School isn't just about math and language arts; it's about relationships. It's my friends that make me wake up in the morning and want to go to school. Being part of a small group of kids who wouldn't get to go to school with my friends would be awful. Just thinking about all my friends growing closer together on the bus, in the cafeteria, on sport-- on sports teams after school, while I have to start over, and kids in fifth grade from my community would have to start over every year, that's terrible to think about. You're treating us like numbers on a page, not the people we are. And the worst part is your projections are based on out-of-date numbers, and Dr. Heiser and his team won't update the projections based on new enrollment numbers. But the board is still being asked to make a decision that can negatively impact kids like me. That just doesn't make any sense. If I were on the Board of Education, I'd refuse to make a decision without good data. Maybe that's what you should do, too. Whatever you do, don't treat us like numbers. Make decisions that actually solve the problems you need to solve. Moving kids like me out of our community doesn't do that. Please pass Ms. McDermott's amendment, and don't split articulate Nantucket kids.
Jalanda Curtis.
Good evening. My name is Jalanda Curtis. I have three children that are currently in the Arundel Cluster. Two are high school students, and I have one that is a third grader, straight A student at Watch Apple. I am speaking about a community of houses tucked back between Piney Orchard Parkway and Watch Apple Road off of Old Watch Apple Road, which includes individual homes as well as a community called Watch Apple Woods. I would like to bring to your attention the matter of the proposed redistricting of this small but important community in the Watch Apple Elementary School boundaries. In all six redistricting scenarios, 28 Watch Apple Elementary students are proposed to move to a neighboring elementary school to prevent future overcrowding. The updated data given to the board, especially from the recent update meeting on October 15th, future overcrowding seems to no longer be an issue at our current school, Watch Apple Elementary. In fact, the school will be underutilized, even if the children are not moved. Additionally, during the committee process for proposed boundary changes to our small area, despite the entirety of impacted families opposing the changes, we didn't meet the algorithm threshold for consideration. This caused an unfair misrepresentation of our opposition and views. By this mechanism, we have both been deemed too many students in our school and need to be moved, but also too small to impact or be hurt in this process. These cannot both be true. I propose that Watch Apple Elementary is removed from the redistricting plans, and these children are kept as currently assigned. This will not impact any neighboring schools negatively and will prevent these children from being uprooted. Many of my neighbors in the community have stated similar concerns, and I hope that you hear our pleas for our children in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney Sparrow.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Sparrow, and I'm the parent of four children in the Eastport Elementary School district. and I'm the parent of four children in the Eastport Elementary School District. I oppose the boundary changes moving Eastport's Jackson Street area to Georgetown East and parts of Georgetown East to Hillsmere, because with no clear data or defined problem, the changes are unfair to families like mine who've chosen to commit to our public school and have demonstrated that commitment through years of effort and volunteering and activities with the school. Eastport's a neighborhood that's built on commitment. Families here have chosen to enroll in and support their public school. We've invested our time, our energy, our resources into the community to make it the thriving, diverse community that it is now. It feels as though we are being punished for the choice that we've made to accommodate prospective parents who might make a choice to send their children to public school. So we are urging that this amendment be rejected.
Megan Lainhart.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Megan Lainhart. I'm a wife, mother, and special educator. I'm here tonight to express my strong opposition to the proposed redistricting of Gingerville, Poplar Point, and Will Eleanor communities from the South River Cluster to the Annapolis Cluster. As a mom to a blended family with fourteen age kids, moving out of the South River Cluster schools would be very disruptive to the bonds built between my kids and stepkids. Instead of going to the same school together, being on the same schedule, carpooling, and attending events together, they would be at different schools and on different schedules. This would create family disruption instead of the unification we've worked so hard for. The truth is, no report or data set has ever supported the proposed amendment of removing the Gingerville, Poplar, and Will Eleanor students from the South River Cluster. In fact, every version of analysis points to the opposite. There is room for us in all three schools. The data supports SR3 presented by Dr. Bedell. For the past three years, census data has shown Edgewater Elementary as maintaining optimal utilization. That's consistency. Meanwhile, the same data has consistently shown Annapolis High as overutilized, and that's before adding more students into that cluster. And we now know that the proposed move of the Apex Program out of Annapolis High is no longer viable or even being recommended. Removing a key assumption from the original model, this amendment doesn't reflect the data or stability our children deserve. We support Ms. Pulliam in her attempt to withdraw the amendment. I urge the board to reject this amendment and demand a transparent, data-driven process that respects both families and facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Cole Fleischer.
Good evening. My name is Cole Fleischer. I'm an eighth grade student at Central Middle School. I live in Edgewater. Please keep us in South River Schools. Edgewater is my home and my community. I play sports here, and my friends and family live here. Sometimes I walk to my grandma's house after school at Central, and I know it's the highlight of her day, and I wouldn't be able to do that at Annapolis Schools. Next year, I want to go to South River High School with my step siblings and not to go to two different schools. I've worked hard to build different relationships and teachers at school. Also, I've switched schools three times, and it's been really hard. And I do not want to do that again. Thank you for your time, and please keep Edgewater kids in South River Schools.
Thank you. I'll be calling up five additional speakers. Karen Carcamo Pinera, Raul Perez, Matt Kelly, Nicole Conlon, and Molly Storinson. Karen.
Good evening. My name is Karen Carcamo Pinera. I am a parent at Eastport Elementary. I oppose the boundary changes moving Eastport's Jackson Street area to Georgetown East and parts of Georgetown East to Hillsmere, as no clear data has been presented to justify a change that lowers diversity within our schools. When Dr. Tobin introduced this amendment, she said that it would most likely decrease diversity across our school. That alone should give us a pause. Eastport Elementary is a diverse, inclusive, and walkable community school where children learn side by side with children from every background. That balance is something our school system should protect and not disrupt. This amendment causes undue harm without a clear purpose or demonstrated need. Eastport families have already invested in building a diverse, inclusive school community. Equity is not achieved by moving families around. It's achieved through investment, collaboration, and stability. I urge you to remove the Eastport boundary changes from the plan the board chooses to adapt and stand by AACPS commitment to maintaining diverse and inclusive schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Raul Perez.
Good evening. My name is Raul Perez, and I'm speaking on behalf of the community of Annapolis Roads. We stand united with our neighboring associations in supporting the amendment to move Annapolis Roads into the Hillsmere Elementary School catchment area. This change is about safety, proximity, and community. The route from our neighborhood to Hillsmere is direct, low in traffic, and safe walk or biking through Powell Park. In contrast, traveling to Georgetown East means navigating busy roads and a dangerous intersection with a history of accidents. There's a clear problem with how our school zones have been drawn. Families who live up to four miles away are zoned for Hillsmere, while our community is just a half mile from the school, and it's left out. It's hard to justify this, and it undermines the very goal of connecting students within their closest community school. This proposal also strengthens public school participation of the Annapolis Neck Peninsula. Allowing our children to attend their neighborhood school would rebuild that connection and encourage more families to reengage with AACPS. Some have raised concerns about diversity, but Annapolis Roads is a growing, diverse community with many young families of varied racial and ethnic backgrounds. My own family reflects that diversity, and we believe including Annapolis Roads and Hillsmere would strengthen it and not reduce it. We do not support relocating Eastport students away from their neighborhood school. Likewise, we seek inclusion in ours as an arbitrary zoning line has currently divided our peninsula. We understand that there is uncertainty around Georgetown East due to low enrollment, aging facilities, and limited funding. This has left our community in limbo while the board considers the next steps. Reviewing Annapolis Roads independently and including it in the Hillsmere catchment as part of this process would provide more accurate data for future decisions and resolve longstanding zoning inconsistency. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of our community's perspective.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Kelly. Matt Kelly. Okay, Nicole Conlon.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Conlon, and I'm a parent at Eastport Elementary. I oppose the boundary changes moving Eastport's Jackson Street area to Georgetown East and parts of Georgetown East to Hillsmere, because there really isn't clear data or a defined problem that is being presented. And these changes threaten to disrupt a program that already advances equity and belonging in our community. I have five children who have attended, currently attend, or will attend in the future at Eastport Elementary. Each of them has benefited from the school's international baccalaureate program and from learning in a truly diverse community. The IB framework doesn't just teach academics. It teaches empathy, critical thinking, and global citizenship. Those lessons are powerful, because at Eastport, they take place in the classrooms where children are learning alongside peers from many different backgrounds and life experiences. This is what public education is supposed to be. Eastport is living proof that when AACPS invests in strong, inclusive schools, families respond. A small group of families should not be asked to carry the burden of strengthening school numbers. First, investment, creativity, and community engagement should be applied. Please, let's build on what's working and not dismantle it. Please remove the boundary changes to Eastport and continue to invest in the success of both Eastport Elementary and Georgetown East, so that every child has access to an excellent, equitable public education. Thank you.
Molly.
Hi, my name is Molly, and I'm a fifth grader at Nantucket Elementary School. I'm here today to support Board recommendations BR1, BR2, and BR3, which allow all Nantucket students to stay in the Crofton Cluster. Some of my favorite things to do are act and dance and sing. Two weeks ago, I was in the Crofton Coral Connections Theater concert. Students from all four elementary schools, including Nantucket, participated in a night of music at Crofton High School with the middle school and high school singers. Not only was the night a great celebration of music, but it was a great celebration of the community we have in Crofton. I love living here. As a fifth grader, I got to see a lot of the friends I've made through Crofton basketball and the friends I'll expect to see next year when I move up to middle school. But I'm worried. I went to the event feeling like I belong in Crofton, but if the amendment you propose doesn't pass, I really don't know if that's true anymore. I'm one of the small group of fifth graders at Nantucket who could be moved to the Arundel Cluster. I'm not invited to Arundel Wide Communities events like this, even if they have them. I know that the schools in Arundel are good schools, but that isn't my community. That's not where I belong. I see the signs everywhere in the schools and on the school flyers, "Belong, Grow, Succeed." Please help my group to belong and pass a plan where there's no splitting Nantucket students from one feeder to another. Thank you.
So I'm going to be calling up five additional speakers. Glenn Wasen, Eli Storinson, Jennifer Kenny, Allison Kenny, and Noah Fort. Our first speaker is Glenn Wasen.
Hi. Good evening, Board. My name is Glenn Wasen. I'm a Piney Orchard resident and father of two children. Bruce, who is four, hopefully is set to attend Piney Orchard Elementary through Arundel High School, and Eliza, who attended Piney Orchard Elementary through first grade and is now a student at Arundel Middle School. Hopefully, set to graduate through Arundel High School, class of 2032. My wife Claire Wasen and I are in support of Board recommendations one through three. We chose Piney Orchard back in 2020 because we love the community. We have lived in two different homes in this neighborhood and became homeowners in the West Courts neighborhood in April 2023. Both our kids are in multiple sports with Gork. Over the weekend, both of our kids just finished soccer as well as field hockey for our daughter. Moving the kids to Inside the Gates at Manor View Elementary and MacArthur Middle School in Fort Meade would make it very difficult for us. The aftercare programs for our son Bruce in elementary school are nearly nonexistent. I can't find any online that go inside the gates. School gets out at 2:30 for elementary schools. This would mean that either my wife and I or I would have to take off two hours per day traveling back and forth to go home, meet a bus, or pick them up within the gates, and honestly, it just wouldn't work. My work is mainly face-to-face, as well as my wife is in the dental field. We can't do that. Please vote for the amendment on the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Eli Storinson.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell and Board members. My name is Eli. I'm a student at Crofton Middle School. I'm here today to support Board recommendations BR1, BR2, and BR3, which allow all Nantucket students to remain in the Crofton Cluster. If split articulation for Nantucket happens, that means I will have to leave Crofton Middle School. I have a lot of friends there, and I would be really upset if I had to leave them to go to eighth grade and high school at Arundel. I've lived in Crofton since before kindergarten and have participated in many Crofton community events. Switching schools would feel like I'm moving and leaving my friends and community behind while still living in the same house. When I was in sixth grade, I applied for tech crew for the school musical. It was such a great opportunity to work with all of the grades as the play came together. I'm looking forward to doing it again this year with many of the same people I connected with last year. Tech crew is only a small group of students who get chosen. I'm so lucky to be one of them, and I can't imagine not being able to participate next year. Being part of Crofton Schools has made me feel like I can belong, grow, and succeed. So much so that I tried out for winter sports this year as well. I fear that split articulation will no longer make me feel like I belong. Taking a small group of students out of the Crofton feeder will have a huge impact, not only on the kids that are leaving like me, but also on our friends who are staying. Lifelong relationships will be broken. Please remember that we are real, real kids trying to continue to live, belong, grow, and succeed within our Crofton community. I ask Dr. Bedell and the board that you listen to us, you hear from us, you care for our safety, our well-being, and not just look at us as numbers.
Thank you. Jennifer Kenny.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Kenny, and I have a freshman and senior at Crofton High School. I'm here tonight urging you to consider a proposed redistricting plan that keeps the Crofton community together and oppose the split articulation at Nantucket Elementary and support the amendment proposed by Ms. McDermott. I speak to you not just as a concerned resident, but as someone who understands firsthand what's at stake. For multiple years, I served as a teacher's aide, where I witnessed daily the importance of stability and community at a child's educational journey. I saw how children thrive when they're surrounded by familiar faces, established friendships, and a sense of belonging. But I also speak from personal experience. When I was a child, I was forced to change school feeders at the end of elementary school. I can tell you the impact was profound and lasting. While my peers moved forward together at middle school, I found myself starting over, struggling to break into established friend groups, feeling like an outsider, and spending critical development years trying to find where I fit in rather than focusing on learning and growing is one of the most difficult things of my childhood. The Crofton community has made its voice clear. Through our online redistricting portal and its multiple community speaking events, residents have consistently expressed their opposition to breaking up our community. And here's what I don't understand. If the enrollment numbers are trending downward, what is the harm in waiting? Why force a disruptive change now when time and trends can resolve naturally? Why put our children through unnecessary upheaval when patience could provide a better solution? Our neighborhood is more than lines on a map. It's carpools and playdates. It's families that look after one and other children, and it's a network of support that makes our community strong. I urge you to listen to the families who will be affected by this decision. Keep our Crofton School feeder intact. Keep our community whole. Our children deserve stability, and our neighborhood deserves to stay together. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Kenny.
Hello, everyone. My name is Allison. I'm fourteen years old. I'm here tonight to speak and oppose the redistricting, moving students from Crofton to Arundel, which affects me and some of my friends. Redistricting might just look like moving students around on paper, but for us, it's a big change. It means leaving behind teachers we love, friends we've known for years, and the teams and clubs that make Crofton feel like home. At Crofton High School, I'm a part of a cheer team, which means school spirit is a huge part of my life. It means that I might have to leave the cheer team that I've worked so hard to be a part of. We've built such strong bonds, and it's not just about cheering at games. It's about being a family, supporting each other, and showing pride in our school. The idea of starting somewhere new is honestly really hard. I understand that redistricting is supposed to help balance schools and make things better for the future, but Crofton High School is not overcrowded. At my lunch, there's barely anyone, and there are plenty of open tables. The hallways and classes are not crowded at all. Also, when the seniors leave after second period, there's even more room at the school. Additionally, I can't imagine being a student at Nantucket and then attend to Arundel. I would leave all my friends and the connections I've made for years. Having to start that all over again sounds terrifying. I just hope that when you make these decisions, you remember what it feels like to be a student, to have your whole world changed because of something you can't control. Please find a way to keep these current students at their Crofton schools. Thank you for listening and thinking about how these decisions affect real students.
Our next speaker is Noah Fort.
Hi. My name is Noah Fort, and I'm a Crofton high ninth grader. I'm asking you to please support Ms. McDermott's amendment to stop split articulation of Nantucket Elementary. Please vote for implementing BR1, BR2, or BR3 that removes split articulation of the Nantucket Elementary. I'm concerned for my fellow students and my safety if we are forced to go to Arundel High or middle school. There is no way to avoid crossing Route Three to get to these schools. Route Three is overcrowded and is very dangerous. Adding full buses to the dangerous roads will cause more accidents, therefore putting my fellow students in danger. I participate in many extracurricular I participate in many extracurriculars at my school, such as cyber patriots or FRS robotics. If I need to get to or from the school at an odd time, I can ride my bike completely on sidewalks to Crofton High. This would be impossible for me to, at Arundel. I'll be, also be learning to drive this year. As a new driver, I have a much safer route to school to get to Crofton than to Arundel. The local Crofton Odenton Redistricting Committee reviewed accident statistics and found I'm six times more likely to get in, in an accident on Route 3 than I am staying on Rideout to go to Crofton High School. I'm asking to please take into account my safety and my fellow students' safety because we need a safe route to school. Please keep my Crofton community together at Crofton High School.
Thank you. So I'll be calling up five additional speakers. Marcy Fort, Pravina Ragavan, Katie Biskey, Laurie Rostock, and Dean Kaby. Marcy.
Good evening. I'm here to urge the Board to implement Ms. McDermott's amendment and select BR1, BR2, or BR3, which removes split articulation of Nantucket Elementary School and maintains current feeder patterns within Crofton High School. Community matters because stability in schools and friend groups gives students in these turbulent times a sense of belonging and normalcy. A strong sense of community is a predictor of student success. Split articulation rips students from their community and creates divisions. Local school systems like Frederick County and Montgomery County are removing split articulations, not adding them. Additionally, based on the 25-26 enrollment data, Crofton High School enrollment numbers are trending downward. The new enrollment figures plus the increase in, in SRC support Ms. McDermott's amendment and the community's request to prevent split articulation and maintain the current Crofton feeder pattern. Finally, having students travel across Route 3 at peak times is dangerous. Data from the State Highway Administration shows students crossing Route 3 would be six times more likely to be in an accident resulting in bodily harm than if you kept the current articulation pattern that does not cross Route 3. During Phase 2 discussions, Ms. Schalheim and Ms. Pullman both mentioned that they want to protect their constituents from deal and Route 2's dangerous traffic. And I share their concerns and add my concerns for students who could be forced to cross Route 3 as well. There are also significant and sustained construction planned for Route 3 for five years beginning in 2026, which would undoubtedly cause students crossing Route 3 to be routinely late and would put them at a disadvantage. I don't believe this Board would purposely endanger AACPS students, but by redistricting students to cross Route 3, you'd be putting them in danger. Please implement Ms. McDermott's, Ms. McDermott's amendment and select BR1, BR2, or BR3.
Pravina.
My name is Pravina Ragvan. I've written to you all about my personal and community concerns and how you've handled the redistricting process as it pertains to Davidsonville Elementary School, DES. I'm calling one of the questions that we've asked and I have two asked for the Board. The primary objective of redistricting was to have less than 100% utilization rate at schools to garner additional funding. Since September 3rd, I've been asking why the removal of 27 students from Glen Isle and other REVA communities has achieved this goal for DES. On October 15th meeting, you stated that you are surgically removing our children to achieve this goal. This is a false statement. Per the AACPS Educational Facilities Plan on page 259, for school year 26-27, there will be 704 students at DES. That represents over 101.44 capacity for your SRC 694 or 105% overcapacity for your SRC 671. Davidsonville Elementary School will be overcapacity for the next nine years, even with the removal of those 27 students. Therefore, DES will not receive any additional number, money. So why are you displacing 27 students? Despite repeated requests to this Board and to individuals, no criteria has been presented on how you've decided to remove this set of students. The minimal path of disruption, as you all outlined, on October 15th, would be to keep those 27 students at DES and reject all six proposals that pertain to Davidsonville Elementary School. AACPS is also embarking on a new 10-year strategic facilities utilization plan that'll come to this Board in December of 2025. We are asking you to delay your vote on the redistricting amendments until such information received, processed, been able to go for public review and comments. Your final redistricting needs to be made by April 2026, not November. Regardless of our ZIP codes, we elected to represent us. Our community does not feel represented at all. Again, I'm asking you to vote no on all the redistricting proposals for DES and asking you to wait on Facilities Plan to be published.
Thank you. Katie Biskey.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Bedell and Board, and the Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, my name's Katie Biskey and I live in Marywood Manor in Davidsonville. I'm the mother of three young children. I have two at Davidsonville Elementary, one's in fourth and one's in kindergarten. And my son is at preschool at the Davidsonville United Methodist Church. For those of you who may not be familiar with Marywood Manor, it's located in the southern part of Davidsonville. When the redistricting process was first introduced, the possibility of being moved into another feeder pattern, specifically to Southern High School, was concerning, concerning for many of us. While the Southern feeder, feeder pattern includes many excellent schools, the proposed change would have significantly increased our transportation times. Lothian Elementary School is four times farther from our neighborhood than Davidsonville Elementary. Beyond the transportation logistics, the feeder change would have separated our community from a school we feel deeply connected to. I want to express my appreciation for the transparency during this process. Our community was able to advocate. We sent in comments and emails. We attended meetings. I'm grateful that all six recommendations this Board is considering reflect, reflect a thoughtful approach that considers minimizing, minimizing feeder changes and limiting, limiting transportation times when possible. I especially appreciate the Board's recognition that shifting areas farther south would have resulted in longer, less efficient bus routes. The current recommendation helps avoid additional commute times and reduces safety risks for our youngest riders. This approach not only prioritizes student safety, but also manages transportation costs effectively. Moreover, maintaining a stable school and feeder pattern fosters continuing, continuity, consistency, and confidence for our families. Many of us, myself included, are federal employees who rely on dependable schools and aftercare programs. Knowing my children can remain in a familiar, supportive environment gives me the peace of mind I need as a working parent. I understand how complex and challenging this process has been and I want to thank you all. Thank you.
Laurie Rostock.
Good evening. I'd like to begin by thanking Dr. Bedell, the Board, and the AACPS staff for the hard work and openness shown throughout this redistricting process. My name is Laurie Rostock and like Katie, from whom you just heard, I live in Marywood Manor. I was involved in the last South County redistricting as a PTO Board member. While the methods for creating the recommendations this time are different, I am thankful that the key concepts of community, transportation safety, and efficiency and the well-being of the student remain paramount. All six recommendations keep Davidsonville students together. That reflects a thoughtful data-driven approach, one that values both evidence and community voice. For decades, Davidsonville's enrollment has remained steady, accounting for about 83% of the school's capacity. There's room for every Davidsonville child while still providing space for students from neighboring areas. We understand that some change is necessary and appreciate that these plans carefully balance utilization, transportation, and the need to minimize disruption for families. We also want to thank the Board for recognizing that shifting areas farther south would have created longer and less efficient bus routes. The current recommendations avoid unnecessary commute times and reduce safety concerns. That means more time for learning and less time on the road. It also helps manage transportation costs while keeping student safety front and center. Most important, these recommendations honor the longstanding connections that make Davidsonville so special. Stable schools and feeder patterns create continuity, consistency, and confidence for families. In fact, there is a pending county study to improve walking and biking paths to Davidsonville Elementary. When a community stays together, students thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. We know this has been a challenging process and we thank you for your thoughtful attention to every detail. Davidsonville families are ready to move forward together because stability, community, and opportunity are exactly what our students deserve.
Thank you. Dean.
Hello, members of the Board. My name is Dean Kaby and I'm a seventh grader at Crofton Middle School. Thank you for your work you are doing on, on the redistricting. I'm here supporting the proposals that will keep all Nantucket Elementary students in the Crofton feeder system because that is where we belong. I'm here to share my three biggest reasons why it's important for us to stay in our current school system, friendship, sports, and music. First, my closest friends go to Crofton. These are people I've grown up with and met over the years, like my best friend Jake, who I've known since first grade, to name a few others, Zach, Eli, and Evan. This, this group of people always support each other, help each other succeed, and try make us the best that we can be. And I don't want to start over in eighth grade. And for sports, I have a goal to play baseball at Crofton High School. I'm part of the Crofton baseball community and my coach right now is the JV coach for Crofton High. I'm playing with other Crofton kids. Sports are very competitive and to break into another school system, it'd be very hard to get on any other team. If athletes are moved into another school system, we'll have to fight for a spot on teams that have been playing together since they were nine years old. From a reputation of hard work and being a good ballplayer, just come with me. Please let us stay. Third, music. My orchestra teacher, Ms. Chester, is phenomenal. She has been nominated for Arundel County Teacher of the Year. Because of her, I'm still playing the violin and learning so much from it. We were supposed to be with our music teachers for three years. I want to keep learning from Ms. Chester. She is irreplaceable. I can learn anywhere, but I know I am thriving at Crofton. Thank you for listening. Please pass a plan that lets me and my classmates stay where we belong, in the Crofton community.
Thank you. So I'm going to call up five more, uh, folks. That's my Amber Kwong, Callie Kwong, Will Connaugh, Elizabeth Stevens, and Brittany Olson. First speaker is Amber.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Amber Kwong and I'm a parent to a soon-to-be eighth grader at Crofton Middle and a second grader at Nantucket Elementary. I'm here tonight to strongly support BR1, BR2, and BR3, all of which keep Nantucket Elementary students together and preserve our path within the Crofton Cluster. The proposed split articulation would do more than redraw lines on a map. It would divide a community, disrupt the stability our children rely on, and undo years of connection, growth, and belonging. Superintendent Bedell's motto is "Belong, Grow, Succeed." But by redistricting this small portion of our community to Arundel, we're taking children who already belong, who have grown, and who are succeeding, and uprooting them from the very foundation that allows them to thrive. These are not numbers or dots on a map. They are children. Children who have spent years building friendships, trusting their teachers, and finding a sense of identity and pride that is deeply tied to Crofton. Moving them now would not only fracture those relationships, but also introduce serious safety concerns. The route to Arundel sends our kids down Route 3, one of the most dangerous highways in our area with frequent accidents and fatalities. My own family has been hit by someone running through a red light and I can tell you firsthand, it was terrifying. I can't imagine sending school buses full of children down that same stretch every day. And beyond safety, the emotional impact cannot be ignored. At a time when youth anxiety and depression is at an all-time high, removing kids from their support system, their friends, teachers, and community can be devastating. Our kids are not statistics. They are growing, belonging, and succeeding here in Crofton. Please, let's not take that away from them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Callie Kwong and I'm a seventh grader at Crofton Middle School. I'm here tonight to support BR1 and BR2, which keeps all Nantucket students together and let us continue into the Crofton schools. I want to share why splitting our school apart would hurt students like me and the community we've grown in. Redistricting might look like a simple way to balance numbers, but for us, it's so much more than that. It means leaving behind our friends, our teachers, and the school community that feels like home. I've grown up with these kids. We've played sports together, gone to birthday parties together, and cheered each, cheered each other on. The thought of starting over somewhere new right before my last year of middle school is honestly really hard to imagine. It's not just about friendship, it's about safety too. The new plan would mean traveling on Route 3, a road known for constant accidents and heavy traffic. My family has seen crashes there and it's scary to think about school buses full of kids having to take that road just for every day. No student should have to risk their safety just to get to school. And beyond safety, this change affects how we feel and how we learn. Being pulled away from our support system, our teachers, our classmates, and our community would make school a lot harder. We've worked so hard to belong and we do belong here in Crofton. Redistricting might change lines on a map, but it will also change lives. Please don't take away the friendship, stability, and sense of belonging that helps us grow and succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Will.
Good evening. My name is Will Connaugh. I'm a resident of Eastport, a graduate of public schools, and a candidate for alderman of Ward 8, the neighborhood directly affected by this proposed amendment of the Annapolis Cluster. I oppose the boundary changes moving Eastport's Jackson Street area to Georgetown East and parts of Georgetown East to Hillsmere because there's been no clear data or defined problem. And breaking up a walkable community puts safety and connection at risk. This is a harmful and unnecessary division. My intent as a resident and a candidate is to build on the community engagement that is currently fostered and supports Eastport Elementary. Additionally, one of my campaign goals is community safety. The loss of walkability this amendment proposes adds safety concerns that are both unnecessary and avoidable. This amendment divides a community that already embodies what AACPS says it values most: belonging, equity, and safety. Eastport is a place where families, including many Spanish-speaking families, walk to school together, share resources, and look out for one another. Removing even a small group from that fabric weakens those bonds and causes real harm for a problem that has not been clearly defined. If we truly believe in belonging, equity, and safety, then we must act on those beliefs, not undermine them. Please keep Ward 8 families together, keep our children walking to school with their neighbors, and do not include boundary changes to Eastport in the final plan the Board chooses to adopt. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Elizabeth Stevens.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell and the members of the Board. My name is Elizabeth Stevens and first I would like to thank you for all the hard work you have done throughout the redistricting process, all while running an entire school system, which I know is a huge task. Living through the redistricting process for the last nine months has been extremely stressful for all parties involved. The morning the WXY scenarios were released, our tight-knit neighborhood met to discuss our concerns for our children, which consisted of traveling on unsafe roads, almost tripling the mileage to the newly recommended school, all while we are just two miles away from Davidsonville Elementary. Our neighborhood dedicated ourselves to ensuring we provide the superintendent and the Board with the most accurate information to back up our community's desire and reasoning to stay at Davidsonville Elementary School and within the South River feeder system. Our research showed that Davidsonville residents only made up 83% of Davidsonville Elementary. This means that there is room for not just Davidsonville residents to attend our neighborhood school, but other surrounding neighborhoods as well. With that said, the line has to be drawn somewhere and no matter where that line is drawn, it's going to be hard, it's going to be difficult for many families. Your message has been clear from the start, which was to minimize the number of children changing schools while balancing school utilization. All six recommendations that Dr. Bedell, his team, and the Board of Education has presented, it is clear that efforts were made and you are trying to say true to your word. it is clear that efforts were made, and you are trying to say true to your word. I can think that I can speak for everyone here, that we are all eager to know where our kids will go to school next year and for the years to come. Thank you again, and for all your hard work and dedication.
Thank you. Brittany.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell and board members. My name is Brittany Olson, and I'm a proud mom of three children who attend Nantucket Elementary in the Crofton Cluster. While we've only lived in our home for a few years, my family's connection to Crofton schools goes way back. My husband grew up here. He attended Crofton Meadows, Crofton Middle, and then he was split off to South River for high school. From 1998 to 2020, Crofton was a divided community. Children were split between Arundel and South River, and for 22 years, that division affected not only where our kids went to school, but how our community functioned. Families were pulled in different directions, and children who grew up together were separated during a crucial part of their educational journey. We loved Crofton, but avoided moving there because we didn't want our kids to face the same divided schools and community my husband did growing up. When we learned that Crofton was finally getting the long-awaited high school it had fought decades for, we saw a chance to live in a community that could finally offer our kids a stable place to grow through their entire school career. In just five short years since Crofton has come together, students are thriving. MCAP test scores in math and English have risen significantly, and our kids are excelling both academically and socially. That success is not an accident. It's the result of unity, stability, and a shared sense of purpose that our schools and families now feel. Crofton has long borne the burden of a divided community. To split us once again would be a regression and disrupt student success and fracture a thriving community. The key to our children's continued success is a stable educational journey and unified communities, which is far more important than any marginal benefit or incremental capacity relief that split articulation of Nantucket may provide. I truly believe this board wants what's best for our children, and tonight I'm asking you to show that by keeping all Crofton Cluster students together and protecting the unity that has made such a powerful difference in our students' lives. Thank you for your time and your dedication to our children and our schools.
Thank you. Okay, I'll be calling five other folks now. Susanna Fox, John Lyons, Shannon Webb, Catherine Fretwell, and Ava Holas. Our first speaker will be Susanna Fox.
Hello, everyone. My name is Susanna Fox. I'm a parent, the vice president of the Edgewater Elementary PTO, and a member of this community. I stand firmly opposed to the proposed redistricting amendment that would move the students of Gingerville, Poplar Point, and Will Eleanor out of the South River Cluster. From the beginning, this process is forced, the data behind it keeps changing, each report tells a different story, yet none of them, not one, support to moving our children. In fact, every set of numbers shows that there is room for us in all three schools. And just this month, Board Member Don Polium, who introduced this very amendment, attempted to withdraw it after Dr. Bedell presented the 2025 census data. Because those numbers reaffirm what our families have known all along: our children belong where they are. Ms. Polium knows it. She was advocating for us when she tried to pull her amendment. Listen to her, please. Because this isn't just about numbers. It's about people. It's about children who thrive when their worlds are steady, when their routines are consistent, their friendships intact, and their sense of belonging secure. There is no need to uproot our students from their town, from their home of Edgewater. If this discussion is truly about growth, there is already adequate space within the South River Cluster to accommodate it without fracturing the bonds that hold our children and community together. My son David is in third grade at Edgewater Elementary. He can't be here tonight to advocate for himself because he's a flag football practice where my husband coaches for South River Youth Athletics. He wanted me to pass along this message: Members of the board, please don't change my school. Since I was in kindergarten, I have been waiting to be in the fourth grade, to be a part of the school musical that's only for fourth and fifth graders. Next year, I'm in fourth grade! I really want to be a part of that musical with my friends. Thanks. So tonight, I ask you to choose stability over haste, community over confusion, and facts over fear.
Thank you. John Lyons.
Hello, good evening. I'm also from the Gingerville community. My name is John Lyons. I am the parent of a South River freshman, and I'm also here to express my concerns and to urge the board to please remove the redistricting amendment that would rezone Gingerville, Poplar, and Will Eleanor communities from South River to the Annapolis Cluster. This amendment to remove the students was based on older data. Based on the new data that's available, it clearly shows that moving these students from South River over to Annapolis Cluster would not align with the utilization. In fact, as a parent of a South River freshman, they're 75% they moved to Annapolis Cluster that's currently at over 100% capacity. The families in our communities are very deeply connected to their schools. My son has moved into the area and is now developing friendships with his teachers, his peers, the community, the neighbors. And moving those, that to him now would be so detrimental. These are kids that, you know, we went through COVID and all of that back when he was in third and fourth grade. That was hard on all of them. I think that, you know, you've heard here tonight, that many of the students, particularly in that age group, have been through quite an unprecedented time since school started. And any additional change to them that's not supported by the data would just cause unnecessary disruption to their continued growth. Again, I would like to thank all of you for your time and continue to service this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Webb.
Dr. Bedell, board members. My name is Shannon Webb. My husband and I are Navy veterans, and we have three children that attend Hillsmere Elementary. I'm very active in the school community, serving as a room mom for all three of my kids, and volunteering in the classroom often. I require that Dr. Tobin withdraw her amendment regarding the Annapolis Cluster Elementary Schools: Eastport, Georgetown, and Hillsmere. There is no current issue with the Annapolis Cluster Elementary Schools. So why are we here? Why are we introducing change to families that send their kids to public school? Families who invest their time, their money, and their children's lives for those who don't? Moving Bay Ridge to Hillsmere would also lead to knock-on effects for two other schools. For the data that indicates that there will only be a change of 11 students in Hillsmere is terribly misleading. The families here that have come to talk don't go to public school, are not represented in the 11, but want to send their kids to Hillsmere. That community that they live in is very large, over 1,000 homes. If only 5% of those families send their kids, say, two kids each household, that is Hillsmere at capacity. So I am here to state that there is no reason to introduce any change to the Annapolis Cluster Elementary Schools and ask, require that Dr. Bedell withdraw her amendment. Thank you.
Catherine Fretwell.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell and board members. My name is Catherine Fretwell. I'm here to oppose the board recommendations 1, 2, and 3, which would shift students out of Georgetown East into Hillsmere Elementary, and I request that Dr. Tobin withdraw her amendment. I am someone who has invested significant time into AACPS as a graduate of South River, a longtime AACPS employee (go infants and toddlers), and a mother of multiple children at Hillsmere, and I am concerned with the approach the board has taken with its proposed changes to Hillsmere and Georgetown East. My understanding is that there's been little, if any, research into the number of students who would be coming into Hillsmere from the area south of Carrollton Road. The only numbers that have been provided are based on the current enrollment at Georgetown East, which is about 11 students, and this does not account for increases from communities that might find Hillsmere more desirable, with upwards of 1,000 houses from south of Carrollton Road. How many students will enroll in Hillsmere with this addendum? What is the plan for if Hillsmere becomes overcrowded? How will the students receive the resources they need? I have not seen this information, and if the board has this information, it would be good to review it. But the board is blindly making a change without giving proper consideration to the effects of that change. With the data and the plan we have been presented, there is no plausible justification for shifting children out of Georgetown East and into Hillsmere when the biggest concern is that Georgetown East is very much under enrollment. From what knowledge we have, this is being driven by families who are not currently enrolled in AACPS, and it was proposed without input from those of us who have continually invested our time and advocated for our currently zoned public schools and without proper inquiry into the effects of the proposed redistricting. So I request that Dr. Tobin withdraw her amendment. Thank you for your time.
Ava.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Ava Holish, and I am proud to be a parent of students at Eastport Elementary since 2019 and currently. I strongly oppose the boundary changes moving the Jackson Street area in Eastport to Georgetown East and relocating parts of the Georgetown East boundary to Hillsmere Elementary. While all of the elementary schools in our school district have their strengths, with no clear data or defined problem, we risk undoing the stability and progress our school has worked so hard to achieve. Since 2020, my children have experienced three different principles at Eastport Elementary. Change like that is challenging, but today, our community is stronger than ever. And yes, it is a wonderful community. Under the joint leadership of Principal Wiseman, Vice Principal Morrissey, dedicated staff, and the community of Eastport, our school now has attained support and stability in a community deeply familiar with our students and who put great care in nurturing the whole student. Under this guidance, our school is thriving and poised to achieve four stars. But more important than this rating is the fact that the students in our school feel safe, secure, and a sense of belonging every day at school. The proposed boundary changes do not solve a problem, but instead create one. These changes threaten to disrupt the stability, excitement, and growth we in the Eastport Elementary community have worked so hard to build over the years. Implementing these changes would cause undue harm for a problem that, quite frankly, has yet to be clearly identified. Please allow this leadership team and our community to continue our incredible progress we have already worked so hard to attain. We must allow Eastport Elementary continued success and vote against these proposed changes. Thank you.
So our next five speakers are Precious Mason, Cassandra Vasco, Karen Halifax, David Black, and Lauren Renegar. We'll begin with Precious Mason.
Hello, my name is Precious Mason. I'm VP of the PTA at Eastport Elementary School. I have two kids, first and fifth, and yes, I might get emotional. So, my kids are thriving, other kids are thriving. I don't drive, my kids can walk back and forth. We call, we call, I'm sorry, we already cried. And also, we all are families. We come together and we do everything that we can for each other's families. Like, today, somebody couldn't get their child. It was a two-hour early dismissal. She asked, "Can I get their, get her child?" And I said, "Yes, we here, we're here for each other." And I'm speaking from a parent point of view, not no VP. Why would you want to interrupt their learning? My kids love Eastport. All these kids love their schools. You see what you're doing. These kids shouldn't even be here. They should be at home carving a pumpkin with their parents, their siblings, or whoever they live with. I say, "This is wrong, yes, it's wrong." How would you feel if somebody keep redirecting your school? You move here, you move there. You have some kids that have anxiety, you have kids that have stress. I have anxiety. Like, this is actually making me, as a parent, feel like, what would I do? I keep, if my child, my children move schools, like, "Mom, why I have to move to school?" I love my teacher. My fifth grader, my fifth grader, he loved his teacher, like, he going through school, like, "Yeah, like, my teachers." But, "Mom," he's like, "Mom, I love my teacher. He teaches, I'm learning, he getting A's, this, she's in fifth grade." I want to thrive, I want my youngest to move to Eastport. Don't, don't, don't mess with us, just leave us alone. We're people, my kids are people. Kids shouldn't be here speaking. Look at this, they should be home. They really should be home. We all should be home. I need to cook dinner. Like, seriously, like, I know, you know, everybody went there, but I'm speaking from a mom point of view. Look, I don't drive, I can't get here, if I have to get my kid, go to this school and there, and if people can't help, I'm there in a walking distance of my kid's school. That's what I'm trying to say, and everybody else, thank you.
Cassandra Vasco.
Hi, my name is Cassandra Vasco, and I have the privilege of serving on the PTA at Eastport Elementary with Precious. So I'm so thankful to be an Eastport parent. I oppose the boundary changes, like you've heard from many of our parents here, that move Eastport students to Georgetown East and also move Georgetown East students to Hillsmere. I oppose this because no clear data or defined problem has been presented to justify this change. From a numbers perspective, the amendment simply does not make sense. Even if we set aside the emotional and community impact, which you just heard, is huge. The data alone show that redistricting Eastport is unnecessary and counterproductive. Eastport is one of the few schools in the Annapolis Cluster with healthy, stable enrollment. It is not overcrowded, rather, it's thriving. It even has room to grow. Georgetown East is under capacity, but this amendment does not solve that problem. Instead, it moves families from a well-enrolled school to another that still will not reach its target capacity. It also increases travel distances and impacts more schools within the Annapolis Cluster than any other proposed change, while offering no measurable benefit. This is a case of creating disruption without data to support it. The amendment causes undue harm for a problem that has not clearly been identified and runs counter to AACPS's own redistricting policy, which calls for an equitable process that values diversity and minimizes disruption to students and communities. Please remove this boundary change impacting Eastport, Georgetown East, and Hillsmere from the redistricting plan and allow AACPS to focus on evidence-based solutions that truly strengthen our schools and students.
Karen Halifax.
Good evening. My name is Karen Halifax. Thank you for holding this public hearing and hearing our feedback. I'm the daughter of a public school teacher, the daughter-in-law of a public school teacher, and the mother of a public school student. And I am here to oppose the board recommendations proposed for the Annapolis Elementary Schools: Hillsmere, Eastport, and Georgetown East, for two reasons. They're rushed, and they fail to fully consider the enrollment consequences of moving substantial numbers of houses between school zones. The Phase II redistricting recommendations proposed by the superintendent have been researched and considered for more than a year. Notwithstanding some of the other testimony tonight about the data there, none of these reports considered the shifts in elementary school boundaries that are proposed in the board's belated amendments to the superintendent's recommendations. And such significant changes to these proposals demand like substantive research and consideration. The challenge of the rushed process is clearly demonstrated by the board's underestimation of the potential enrollment that may result from its amendments. As we've heard tonight, based on this testimony, there's clearly more interest in Hillsmere, for example, than is demonstrated in the 11 students the board assumes will attend Hillsmere after these changes. And that doesn't really take into account the nearly 1,000 homes that are being added to these school boundaries. If the board is really interested in pursuing additional options, it should engage in full data collection, a full survey, research, and hearing process. It shouldn't introduce them at the very end of a cycle. And if individual neighborhoods, like mine and like the representatives from Eastport tonight, who are together and want to commit to public schools, if others want to do the same, then they can certainly do so within their existing catchments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Black.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, members of the board. My name is David Black, and I am a parent of two children at Hillsmere and an active parent volunteer. I am here tonight to request that Dr. Tobin withdraw her amendment regarding the Annapolis School Cluster because of incomplete justification and insufficient consideration of the impact, as some and many others have stated here tonight, around, in particular, student enrollment. For over a year, this redistricting process has been about student capacity. It's about planning not just for next year, but for the years that follow. Capacity concerns drive student performance, they affect teacher retention, and it's understandable that we're spending this much time focused on the issue. All scenarios that have been presented have been grounded, to an extent, in capacity planning for the future. This amendment, however, increases capacity at the 11th hour, without consideration, as noted, to the projected increases that could occur from those students that are not currently enrolled in this area, as well as all of the existing developments that are actively underway in the Annapolis community. Parkside Preserve is one community right now that's adding 152 homes, already currently factored into our existing school zones and not reflected in these numbers. At no point in the planning efforts does the capacity of the Annapolis Elementary School Cluster come into question. We've had this process going on for over a year. The fact that this occurred at the end of a years-long planning process raises questions about the change being less about capacity, more about individual concerns for quality. The quality of a school is driven by the students, the teachers, and the parents involved in the school. That is a discussion- That is a discussion for a separate forum. This is not the place, this is the place for capacity, and it should be the focus. So, please remove this amendment, stick to your stated goals of capacity planning, diversity in our school system, and effective student-teacher ratios. Thank you for the addition of the meeting to hear our voices, and please remove this amendment. Thank you.
Lauren Renegar.
Good evening, my name is Lauren Renegar, and I am the parent of four children, three of whom are current students at Central Elementary. We are residents of The Point, one of the four South River Colony Town Home Communities, inexplicably being redistricted to Edgewater Elementary. Based on your own data presented at previous meetings, it is neither beneficial nor essential for these 37 students from Central Elementary to move to Edgewater Elementary. It does not alleviate any overcrowding, as the data revealed previously showed a utilization of approximately 97% without this move, and that includes moving the children from Davidsonville to Central. This only serves to disrupt our children's routines, academic success, and sense of community. There is no explanation provided for this move, which targets only the Town Home Communities of South River Colony, splitting South River Colony between Central Elementary and Edgewater Elementary. This is an arbitrary move. Moving the students from Central to Edgewater is not based on research, opinion from the public, nor distance from either school. The quality of their education, social-emotional development, and need for consistency in their young lives is of the utmost importance to me as a parent, as well as many other parents in our community. On a personal note, we are a federal government family. We can be relocated and have to start our children in a new school potentially anytime. This is a fact that we are aware of and a choice that we made for our family. Redistricting our children to another school without a career-related move is not our choice. I implore you, members of the board, to carefully reconsider unnecessarily redistricting 37 students from Central Elementary to Edgewater Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. Our five next speakers are Janice Byrd, Mark Adamczyk, Marquette Carter, Austin Fried, and Victoria LaViola.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell and members of the board. My name is Janice Byrd, and I'm here tonight to oppose the redistricting amendment moving the students of Gingerfield, Poplar Point, and Will Eleanor Communities out of the South River Cluster, because this amendment is not based on data. In fact, no data has supported moving these students from any of these communities. And now, the latest information makes this even more clear. And Board Member Dawn Poliam has attempted to withdraw her proposed amendment after Superintendent Dr. Bedell presented the unofficial 2025 student data, because those numbers as well further support keeping our Gingerfield, Poplar Point, and Will Eleanor students in their current schools. The data supports SR3 presented by Dr. Bedell. When even the sponsor of the amendment recognizes that the data no longer supports her proposal, that should tell us this proposal, proposed move, is not needed. We all want balanced enrollment and strong schools, but that requires a plan grounded in facts and not projections. The numbers don't justify disrupting our families, neighborhoods, and schools that are already operating efficiently. So please, remove this amendment that would move the students of Gingerfield, Poplar Point, and Will Eleanor out of the South River Cluster. Thank you for your time and for considering what the numbers and the families behind them are telling you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Adamczyk.
Good evening. I want to thank Ms. McDermott and every member of the board for putting forward amendments to add legacy options for juniors and seniors and removing split articulation from the Nantucket Elementary feeder, forcing our children to move from Crofton High School to Arundel High School. As the only feeder in the entire county with split articulation put forward from the superintendent's proposals, my family, along with countless other families, strongly oppose this for several reasons that have been identified over the last year. My name is Mark Adamczyk, and I'm the proud parent of two student athletes at Crofton High School. My daughter Peyton is a sophomore and captain on the JV soccer team, and Hudson, a junior, a captain on the cross-country team. It's been well documented that crossing Route 3 to get to Arundel from our Crofton Valley neighborhood, when students currently have the ability to walk and ride bikes to Crofton, is an unnecessary risk. Safety issues related to certain roads and commuting distances have been raised by members of this board, and we thank you for that. Just this week, Route 3 was closed yet again for a full day due to another serious motor vehicle accident. This is in addition to the 18-wheeler trucks that will be zipping up and down Route 3 starting soon due to the massive industrial warehouse being put just north of Rydell Road. Thank you also for delaying the previous hearing to listen to the updated enrollment numbers a few weeks ago. The latest information provided shows the superintendent overestimated the original enrollment numbers for Crofton and significantly underestimated the Arundel numbers with the large impact from the Two Rivers. We do ask that removing split articulation is an important part of this board and decision-making process. Split articulation was used to justify building Crofton High School in the first place, so we ask you that you remain where you started years ago in building the high school and remove split articulation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marquette Carter, and I'm the parent of a kindergarten at Eastport Elementary. I oppose the boundary change moving Eastport Jackson Street area to Georgetown East and parts of Georgetown East to Hillsmere, because without clear data or a clear problem, it's hard for families to trust the process. As a new parent, parent in the public school system, this process has been confusing and discouraging. I just recently moved to Annapolis, so, you know, and just put my daughter into Eastport. So, her having to, you know, move, you know, miss a few friends is, you know, as soon as she just met them, it's kind of like, you know, a slap in the face. Eastport was never even considered in redistricting discussions until mid-September, even though the process began with the community meetings back in February. The data keeps changing, new proposals were added as recently as mid-October, and the public hearing schedules have shifted. It feels like the ground is constantly moving that makes it hard for families to trust what's happening. That's disappointing, because my daughter and I have already found such a strong sense of community and connection at Eastport. I want to believe in the system we join, but the amendment and the way it's being handled has made that very difficult. Please bring stability and clarity back to this process, remove the Eastport boundary changes from the final plan, and rebuild trust with the families who believe in public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Austin Fried.
Hello, my name is Austin Fried, and I live in the Monarch Community in Gambreles. I'd like to ask that you please consider the board's recommendations for school redistricting. The superintendent's recommendations move us to an elementary school twice thus far and outside of our community. Several families in our neighborhood have already moved out because of concerns about being rezoned away from Two Rivers Elementary. Many others, including my own family, chose to buy a home within the Monarch Community specifically because of its zoning. We truly appreciate your commitment to doing what's best for our children's education, and we hope you'll take into account the impact these changes are having on the Monarch Community in Gambreles. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Victoria LaViola.
My name is Victoria LaViola, and I am a ninth-grade student and a cheerleader at Crofton High School. I am not a student that would be redistricted to Arundel, but I have a lot of friends and teammates who would be redistricted, and I want to keep the community together. School redistricting may seem like a normal process, but it's not. Students are sent to new schools, which causes the community to fall apart. Crofton High School is nowhere near crowded, classes are good sizes, and the hallways are never a problem to walk in, and the cafeteria is never filled. Imagine spending years building friendships and joining clubs or sports and that all being taken away from you. Redistricting tears apart communities and makes students feel isolated, and I know how it feels to be a new kid, it takes years to finally feel a sense of belonging. Students should not be taken away from their school, especially for a reason that's not true. I do believe overcrowding could be an issue, but it's not in Crofton High School. Students deserve stability, and ripping them out of their community is not stability. So please, make the right and fair decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Sloane Bunting, Lane Neidig, Emily Tommasini, and there were two individuals at the beginning who did not show, Alan Wheelwright, I believe, Alan Wheelwright and Matt Kelly.
Good evening, board members. My name is Sloane Bunting, I'm 14, and a student athlete at Crofton High School, speaking to oppose moving Crofton students to Arundel. If you were to ask me my opinion on the redistricting rules that could fall into place, my thoughts are that it's unnecessary and not needed for Crofton High. My best friend Allison Kenny, who had also spoken tonight, had expressed her thoughts on how it would impact the students here in possibly negative ways. Ally is a cheerleader for the Crofton JV Cheer Team, she has worked hard and shown her amazing abilities here at school to be where she is now. I myself am a part of a sports team at Crofton High School. I played for Crofton JV Field Hockey and hope to play for Crofton Lacrosse in the spring. If I was in the position of a redistricting student, I know I would feel overwhelmed, annoyed, and upset. I know that lots of students here at Crofton High School have worked very hard to be where they are right now, and have put in numerous hours throughout the year so far, working on things that they love most, and for me, that would be my sport. Throughout the normal school day, we have four classes each day with a little over an hour-long class, 30-minute block period, and 30-minute lunch. Right now, we are only at least a third of the way through the school year, and from my own personal experiences, so far, I've not had any problems with being crowded, pushed around, and not having enough space in classrooms or during block. Around noon, many seniors leave early since they only have two classes a day, which clears up the hallways. I know redistricting is being considered because of the overcrowding, but as a freshman, I have noticed that isn't an issue at all. The school feels spacious and easy to get around. Redistricting would only separate friends and force students to start all over again. We built strong friendships here, and it would be hard to lose that. So I ask that you please reconsider redistricting plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lane.
All right, good evening, Dr. Bedell and members of the board. My name's Lane Neidig, I'm a father of four children under eight. I'm here on behalf of the 27 students in Glen Isle and Hamilton Estates in Reva involved in the redistricting from Davis Elementary and being moved to Central. So, you know, we were a little caught off guard in the Phase 1, where all three of the third-party plans did not involve our neighborhood. I think that, you know, give us the false sense of security that maybe, you know, our neighborhood was okay, but ultimately, in this game of potentially hot potato, where we got redistricted on both of the SR1 and SR2, you know, with little time to act, we had to kind of jump in. So, you know, we said, I think, recently by this body, I think a meeting or two ago, that we were surgically chosen. However, we were never really engaged as a community, so this was obviously very concerning for us. And in this whole process, you know, if you look at all the maps, we are the only attendance island where we're actually not connected to the community which we're being sent. So this is basically cutting us off from our assigned zone and really directly conflicts with kind of the stated policy and goals of the AACPS here with the redistricting. And I know we all lost a lot of sleep in this process, and now, should we even be doing this? The process is rushed, the data is unclear, many of the communities have been thrown in at the last moment, so I think we have to look at that. And obviously, we've only had a couple of months to kind of get together, and town halls, Zoom calls, neighborhood tours, I mean, we thought of everything, and we actually found 23 additional seats and a new classroom, I don't know if everybody knows that. So, if those are considered, I think they have been considered by the IAC, we wouldn't have to move, South River Colony wouldn't have to move, and the domino effect would stop. So please, either submit amendment to allow our kids to stay at Davidsonville Elementary, or, you know, pause this redistricting process, because we need more time. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Emily.
Thank you for the chance to speak tonight. My name is Emily Tommasini, and I'm an active member of the school communities of Eastport, Annapolis Middle, and now Annapolis High. I oppose the boundary changes moving Eastport's Jackson Street area to Georgetown East and parts of Georgetown East to Hillsmere, as no clear data or defined problem justifies disrupting the community that we have built. Within days of the amendment being announced, our families came together to meet with Dr. Tobin and to ask questions every parent deserves to have answered. We asked, why is it more important to increase enrollment at Georgetown East than to maintain the diversity of Eastport, Hillsmere, and Georgetown East? We asked why families south of Carrollton Road, who are not currently sending their kids to public school, are more likely to go to Hillsmere, and what data supports that? We asked why families who have not chosen to and invested in their public school should be uprooted from the community that they worked so hard to build. And we asked what creative solutions were tried to strengthen enrollment at Georgetown East before proposing to break apart Eastport. We asked these questions respectfully, hoping for clarity, but the answers didn't justify the harm this amendment would cause. My oldest was a student at Eastport when we were redistricted in 2017, and my youngest is a student there now. I have seen how that kind of disruption affects friendships, routines, and confidence. Eastport Elementary has done everything else of it. We've grown, we've invested, and we've built a diverse, thriving, walkable neighborhood school that embodies the very goals this district aspires to. Align the final redistricting plan to reflect the work we have done together, and remove changes to Eastport. Let Eastport continue to be the example of what's possible when families, educators, and leaders work in partnership for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. So, once again, I'd like to call Alan Wheelwright. Alan Wheelwright? Okay, I'm not saying that he's here. Matt Kelly. Matt Kelly, and once again, I'm not saying that he's here. So, ladies and gentlemen, that does conclude our public hearing this evening. Just a few final comments. One is that, I say this all the time, redistricting does mean that some students will be going to different schools. Unfortunately, that's, that's, that's a fact. But I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for being here this evening, whether it's in person or virtually, for advocating for yourself, your schools, your classmates, your friends. We thank you so much. I would like to thank all of my members of the board, Dr. Bedell, and the staff for being here. Also, we will have a second public hearing, and a link to register to speak at the board's second redistricting hearing set for November the 3rd, 2025. Will go live at www.aacps.org/BoardComment. That'll be 3:00 PM on October 29th, 2025. Remember, speakers may only speak at one redistricting hearing. For those that want to sign up for our next public hearing, please make sure you follow the directions once you hit the link. Once again, everyone, thank you so much for being with us this evening. I applaud each and every one of you, thank you so much. Stay safe.